Call back to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for October 21, 2019. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What was that ticking?
I think it's the heat.
No, it's the flash. Okay, so let's, we'll start with public comment.
Do you mind if I just ask one quick question?
Sure, come on up.
Stanley, reporting, we stoked blue road. I know you all had a strategic planning session recently. Did you have any discussion about any celebration for the 375th? Which is 2021. Historical organizations are wondering because, you know, we're wondering if we had to start thinking about that to help you all, so.
Well, no, we hadn't. It was more of budget discussions and getting ready for the budget season, but no, we hadn't had that particular discussion.
But, you know, at some point. Think about it, if you thought, you know, it certainly wouldn't be like the 350th, but it could be something, you know, we could have a little celebration. We might have some nice stuff to celebrate too in 21, you know, we might have a recreation complex and some other things to celebrate, so. Just a thought.
It was a big celebration at the 350.
It was, nothing, we're not gonna, we're probably not gonna do anything like that, but we could do something, so.
We, we, everything was going.
You know, if you want to think about that and let us know if we can help.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hi, evening. Ellen Mojer, 137 Carradive, and trustee of Osgood Hill. I would just like, as Dave Rand has reminded us months ago, and I've been saying every meeting, we need to move forward and disappointed it wasn't on the agenda tonight that there weren't appointments for the trustee board. We'd like to move on and I'm here to request that we get started once again, but I have not stopped. I put on my volunteer hat that I've had on for the last 10 years up there, and we have accomplished quite a lot as far as getting people visiting and tours. I didn't see you guys last week, but Mondays have been getting people up there and going for tours and enjoying the grounds, and a lot of wonderful accolades from our neighbors, neighboring town residents. And I wish you guys had gone up last week. It was quite a nice day, there was well over 100 people with children having picnics and coffee. Regina saw me in the morning picking up some bagels and there was hot apple cider and it was enjoyed by all. But we have holidays coming up and it's coming sooner than later. We are prepared and our vendors and our local community has been pitching right in and we're not stopping, but we would like to have a board so we can move forward and meet together as what we're supposed to be doing. And as Dave Rand had reminded us, what are we all waiting for? The town voted, we'd like to be moving on and doing some more important things that are on agendas. I would like to have the minutes put back up, the website that had been missing, as well as the schedule of meetings to please be posted. Thank you.
So, we've heard this a few times, I just want to make a couple of comments on what Ellen just spoke about. So, with respect to the meeting postings, we currently don't have a quorum on that board, which by Mass General Law, we cannot post meetings without a quorum because we cannot have a meeting unless we have a quorum. So, we can't post meetings for a quorum, for a board that right now does not have a quorum. Secondly, with respect to the number of people on the board, we are waiting for people to apply. We've advertised it many times, we're waiting for a group of people to apply so we can have a pool to choose from. So, we're still working that, we've put it, it's on the website. Anybody out there that wants to be part of the Stevens Estate Board, please, you know, go out there and put an application in. We have had some, but we're, you know, we'd like to get a pool of applicants to work through, so we still don't have enough for a quorum. So, that's the second thing I wanted to mention. Thirdly, yes, we all love the Stevens Estate, Ellen, I don't know why personal commitments kept us from going to the open house on Monday, Columbus Day, but we weren't able, I wasn't able to make it personally. We all love the Stevens Estate, I go there almost every day for hiking with my dog, so, you know, there's, no one doubts or has any qualms with it, the place is a beautiful facility and we all love it, so those are my three comments, but thank you for your comments.
May I ask on the quorum, because that's been kind of tossed around, so maybe someone or the town manager knows. What designates a quorum? If there's only, if there's only five members who are on it, that means a quorum is three. If there's three members on it, wouldn't the quorum be two, or is there a base minimum for a quorum?
So, the quorum is based on the membership, not on the number of people who are actually appointed? So, if you think about it, it would be a great way to skirt trying to have a full membership, right? So, we could say that if two of you suddenly decided you didn't want to be here anymore, we wouldn't fill those anymore and two would be a quorum and we would operate as three, and that really wouldn't be fair, right, to the community? So, a quorum is based on the total membership, not the total number of people appointed. So, if you have five, it would always be three, even if there was only three of you.
And this board happens to be seven.
So, it's seven, so a quorum would be four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, well, that's good clarification, because I think all of us were like, all right, define that, okay.
Thank you, Ellen.
Is that for voting, or just meeting?
Well, I'm sorry?
Is that for voting, or just meeting?
That's for meeting, you can't have a meeting unless you have a quorum.
But when you post a meeting.
They could meet and they could talk, but they could not take any official action and it wouldn't be a publicly, we wouldn't have to publicly post it as a meeting because it's not a quorum, right? So, if they wanted to meet and have conversations, for instance, right, if tonight only two of you came, it didn't mean we couldn't just still sit here and have a conversation because no quorum existed, right?
True, okay.
But you would not be able to take any formal action, right?
But your meeting is posted, you don't know if there's going to be a quorum, is what I'm saying.
But we would not.
We know that there's not a number, there's not a quorum that's currently appointed to the board, so we, yes, we know there's not going to be a quorum.
So, we've had people come to our open meetings.
But they're not members of the board. The board, a quorum consists of members of the board.
And in our case, it's four.
It has to be four.
So, for eight months, we've been waiting and we're still waiting and there's been qualified people.
I'm sorry, it hasn't been eight months, it was since June.
No, there were positions open before that.
Well, yes, but they, you have not had a quorum since June is when members asked not to be reappointed. So, that's when you, the quorum ended in June, so not months, oh yeah, months, three months, but not eight months.
In response to one of Ms. Mojer's other questions was about can you take minutes or summary even without a quorum that just says it's a discussion, or not?
It's certainly not a requirement, you know, and I would, if you were going to do that, I would clearly state on the summary of the discussion that no quorum was present and therefore no official action could be taken.
But the point that minutes were somehow removed from our website and not put back, my understanding is that the minutes need to be filed with the clerk that officially were taken at a meeting with a quorum voted on and approved as approved minutes, then we post them. So, what has been, followed that process is what is posted, is that correct? Because that's my understanding from different conversations.
And they were there, they were voted, and I have copies of them.
Well, you've been saying that, but you haven't produced them, so if you could show them.
Nobody has called to talk to me since May. I have those minutes.
But you've been, okay, I don't want to argue with you, but you've been here and we've asked you every time.
I don't want to, but I have the minutes, I have the bylaws.
I understand that, and we've asked you every time to produce them, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, so next on the agenda is one of the things we love to do, swearing in a new officer on the police department, oh, I'm sorry, fire department. We love the police department too, but this one, the fire department, and I'm wearing my pin veil, I promise, it was just a.
Well, again, thank you, thank you again for having us. This evening, we have the pleasure of swearing in Dan Nicolosi. Dan was hired October 15, 2018. Dan graduated from the Massachusetts Fire Academy on May 24, 2019. I just want to read a little bit about what the academy puts out so people have a better understanding what is, what they actually go through down at the fire academy. Today's firefighters do more than fight fires. They're the first ones called to respond to chemical and environmental emergencies ranging from suspected presence of carbon monoxide and gas leaks. They may be called to rescue a child who has fallen through the ice or has locked himself in a bathroom. They rescue people from stalled elevators and those who are trapped in vehicle crashes. They test and maintain their equipment, including self-contained breathing apparatus, hydrant, hoses, power tools, and apparatus. At the Massachusetts Fire Academy, they learn all these skills and more from certified fire instructors who are also experienced firefighters. Students learn all basic skills they need to respond to, contain and control fires. They receive training in public fire education, hazardous material incident mitigation, flammable liquids, stress management, confined space rescue techniques, and repelling. The intensive 10-week program for municipal firefighters involves classroom instruction, physical fitness training, firefighting skills training, and live firefighting practice. Dan represented North Anova Fire extremely well when he was at the fire academy. Again, proud to say that Dan was well about, well above the class average. They go through seven exams and then they have a final exam. Exam one, 96, exam two, 90, exam three, 92, exam four, 88, exam five, 96, exam six, 94, exam seven, 94. That was all above class average, so Dan did a tremendous job there. Currently, Dan is temporarily on Unit 2, Station 1, under Lieutenant Ware. Beginning next week, Dan will be going back to his permanent position on Unit 4, Station 2, under Lieutenant Nuzbaum, who's here tonight. We always like to read a little something that the lieutenant that had him recently, a comment about Dan. Lieutenant Ware commented, "Dan has a positive attitude and works well with the unit. He is always looking to increase his knowledge about the job. Dan has been a pleasure to have on the shift." So, tonight, Dan will be sworn in by acting town clerk Laurie Burzleff. And then Dan's badge will be pinned in by his father, Dan Nicolosi Senior.
I'm just gonna place that.
Okay, what do I go with here? Okay. Aye, Dan Nicolosi. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully. Impartially discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As a firefighter for the town of North Andover. In accordance with the bylaws of the town of North Andover. And the laws of the Commonwealth. Thank you.
You can just sign it.
So, before we have Dan Nicolosi Senior come up, we do the history of the badge. Dan will be receiving badge 47. Jeff Gottscheide is the first firefighter to be issued badge 47. Firefighter Gottscheide was issued badge 47 in 2007. On February 25, 2019, firefighter Gottscheide was promoted to lieutenant. Dan Nicolosi is the second firefighter to be issued badge 47. Firefighter Nicolosi was presented badge 47 on October 21, 2019. So, if we could have Dan's father come up? Well, we want to thank you again. Quick announcement, a couple of things coming up. We do have two new firefighters here tonight. James Savarino, James will be going to the fire academy on, help me with this, November 4, I believe. Okay, December 2, okay. And our newest firefighter who's in his second week of training is David Tester in the back row. So, again, two more firefighters that will probably be standing in front of you in a short period of time.
Are you gonna read all their exam grades to us too? So, the guys remember that, right?
I just felt that Dan's, I felt Dan's was so impressive that I just had to recognize those, you know, in the 90s, you gotta, so.
Good job, Dan.
All right, but thank you again. And two other things, tomorrow night, I will be going to the Board of Selectmen's meeting in Middleton. One of our firefighters along with Middleton Fire is being recognized for the May, excuse me, the September 13, 2018 fire on Green Street, which was selecting Rosemary Dealey's home. They'll be recognized with a citation tomorrow evening. Nick Montone, North Anova firefighter, will also be present at that because that was the fire that he came home from the fire academy and stopped there and assisted Middleton Fire with that, working that fire, so I just wanted to bring it up.
They were the first ones on the scene and they stayed with us the entire night, and I'll tell you, no, as all the firefighters do. They fought with such ferocious fervor to put the fire out in my house and it, and.
And again, on November 26, I believe you do know that at the Worcester, it's in Worcester, it's the firefighter of the year awards, North Anova, Andover, and the city of Lawrence will all be recognized for the actions from September 13 through December 31. They're gonna be, being recognized with a special award. So, just, if you don't have that information, I'll make sure you do have that, I believe you might have that, so. That's all I have.
Well, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Nice to see you, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, thanks for the.
Proud moment. Few of those guys are gonna be in the fashion show.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for October 7, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the official session minutes of October 7, 2019 as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, we'll move on to governmental reports. First, Halloween hours, so I believe the chief has recommended 4:30 to 7:30?
5:30 to 7:30.
5:30 to 7:30 for October 31.
Yes.
Okay.
I would move, I would move approval, but I'm just gonna say, we have talked with Boy Health Director as well, just to make sure that there's no issues there. With temperatures now dropping down to 50 degrees, we're seeing mostly mosquitoes dormant. He is suggesting that if it is warmer that day, people do take precautions and apply bug spray, et cetera, but based on his conversations with the state, he's very comfortable with the 5:30 to 7:30 number.
Okay, so we had a motion for approval of those hours and day and hours, and we'll do it. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, update on the senior center.
So, there's nothing new from the last meeting. As we told you last time, the general bids are due in February. Right now, we're working on making sure that all specifications are 100% correct, that has been advertised. We should know in the January timeframe whether or not we will be seeing bids or not because sub bidders are filed then. And so, that will give us an idea if we're on target, but other than that, nothing new from the last meeting.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, anything? Okay, we'll move forward. Update on Columbia Gas.
Okay, so I did put a memo out this morning, we did have a meeting with Columbia Gas this afternoon as well. So, since our last meeting of the board, the Columbia Gas has been required by the Department of Public Utilities to inspect 400 additional lines to make certain that those are also disconnected from the abandoned main. It's gonna be following the same process as last time, so the three letters plus phone calls. There are a number of people right now who already have not responded to the first three phone calls, so we'll be starting to call those people as well. So far, they have inspected 124 of those lines out of the 400, with 91 found to be disconnected and 19 found not to be disconnected, 14 requiring additional verification. So, if I remember correctly, sometimes they can't tell internally if it has been capped or not, so that means they have to do external work. 14 of those are required right now. The initial batch of 119 inspections have been completed, with 95 found disconnected from the main and 24 found not disconnected from the main, and all 24 of those have now been repaired. And just a reminder for the public, DPU has placed a moratorium on non-emergency Columbia Gas work statewide, but that means that we're seeing more people in town doing our work. So, while I know that is alarming, that is planned for. Additionally, they will be doing new lines, so we have been receiving requests from new customers, our conversions. We are approving those, those are then going to Columbia Gas and then going to DPU for final approval before that work is starting. So, we're approving them contingent on the DPU approval, that's what they've asked us to do it. So, I just want to remind people that they will see more trucks, and I know that can be alarming, but it's a positive thing because they're trying to complete this work by the middle of November.
For the ones that were found to still be connected, or not, I should say not disconnected, what would that have meant?
They have said that it's not a public safety issue, that they were basically abandoned, so there was no gas in the line. However, the requirement was that they needed to cap them all, and I'm sure the requirement was put on for a reason, so that's why they, that's why they went forward and required the additional inspections.
Now, we know that there was no gas in those lines.
Yes, those lines are abandoned, because they're continuing to do leak checks through all the communities and they do leak checks when they do these as well. There is right now 10 total leaks, grade two, grade three, not grade one, throughout the communities that they're monitoring. I think one of the three are in, one of, only one or, one to three of those are in North Andover, only one in the impacted area.
What does that mean?
So, they're low-level leaks that they're monitoring and repairing, that they're finding while they're doing like further analysis of the lines, and those numbers are kind of getting smaller when we're having these weekly phone calls as they're repairing those leaks. So, they're outdoing leak detection while they're doing this work as well. But these lines have all been abandoned and have no gas in them, but should have been capped.
So, what should residents do? So, for instance, they had responded to a home that had PVC pipes laid beneath the lawn as part of a drainage solution. Those pipes were replaced after that first incident last fall. Then they came, they did their digging, they destroyed those pipes. The homeowner found out when the storm hit last week and their basement flooded. What is the process for those type of situations? Because there are no longer any, the claims process has changed since last fall, and so if somebody has something damaged because they're digging up, like in the case of that particular homeowner, all their shrubbery was dug back up.
So, they will be doing the same repairs they did last time around. So, there's a new flyer that went out to all of the people whose homes that they are currently visiting that has information on how to file a claim. They're doing sidewalk panel replacement, so they're trying to do as much work as they can outside of the street, particularly problematic in Andover and Lawrence because they had already started their street restoration work. So, they're trying to do as much work as they can in the sidewalk panels and on the soft surfaces. And soft surfaces is the problematic issue that you are seeing. So, what they're saying right now is that they'll be doing repairs to sidewalk panels immediately, but the majority of the lawn work, the soft surfaces, are gonna be done in the spring because it won't last if they do it now. But there is, if people can feel free to reach out to me, and I'm happy to walk them through the process of going through the cleaning process, but we do have phone numbers for them to reach out to as well, it's a 1-800 number, but I'm happy to kind of, people have been calling since the last meeting and I've been kind of walking them through the process, or even if they're confused as to where they stand, have they been verified, have they not been verified, why are there markings? We've been getting calls from residents that we've been helping through that process. So, feel free to call me or Laurie or Gillian.
Have we moved forward with establishing a, I don't know if this is the right term, a listserv for, a designated email list for people who just wanted to get updates on Columbia Gas, so we weren't necessarily, if you were outside the impacted area, you didn't necessarily have your email flooded with these notices?
Yes, so we actually had a staff meeting today where we talked about that. Right now, we're putting everything else, the news and announcements, because we feel like people are alarmed townwide when they see the vehicles.
I bet.
But we asked Chris to form a more restrictive listserv people could sign up for, particularly for when we begin that restoration work, because that just finished getting bid. We have, working on a contract right now. We may start some small drainage work now, but like I told you before, we won't be paving that to the spring. And so, I think it would be helpful to have that more restrictive audience, so Chris is working on that now.
Thank you, I know that you're coming into the middle of this, actually hopefully at the end.
Hopefully at the end.
And so, Mos, what's driving the middle of November date, is that the repaving and everything, is that a deadline? Because I don't want to be driving to a date again and have them make mistakes.
DPU is requiring them to do it within that deadline, so they're.
And again, what's driving that by DPU?
Well, so if they did not finish this initial group of work by October 15, 18, they were gonna get a million dollar fine. And so, now that fine is being implemented again for the second. again for the second group of work having to be done by mid-November. And I'm assuming a lot of it has to do with making sure that all the systems are up and running and operating as a start and they get cold, because there is other work that's contingent on them. So they finish this work, there's other work they're going to be doing. And it's all contingent on each other.
I just would hate to see them.
I know, I agree.
Stumble through things again and cause more issues as opposed to doing it right.
I was actually hopeful.
I understand the reason for it.
Yeah. I was hopeful the second group was going to have less mains that were found to be, it's a lot, yeah. It's a lot in the second group, which makes me nervous.
And so how does that, how does that bubble up? I mean, how was it that the initial group was found, oh, we have to tackle this, and then a second group was found, which wasn't part of the initial announcement? Like how, are there certain things that we can do internally or that perhaps that you are doing internally to see, well, this is what you missed the first, like how did they miss these 400 the first time?
So I think what happened was when they were required to do that first initial grouping, when they saw what the, when the DPU saw how high the percentage were found that were not disconnected, they ordered this second grouping. And so there's technically a third group that they could ask them to verify as well. This third group were never mains that were inside the home at all. They were always outside the home. So the assumption was that no work was ever done in any of those anyway because they always were outside. But the thought is that DPU may require them to go forward and have to do verification on the third group too.
What, I don't want, I don't want Columbia Gas people to be visiting homes if they don't have to.
Right.
But my opinion is anything less than 100% is unacceptable. And so what can we do as a board if we were so inclined, although I certainly am as an individual, to push that any question, any questionable main be looked at?
I mean, I think I could draft a correspondence to the DPU from you, that you could vote on your next meeting, just asking them to continue to urge this due diligence. They have not started the third-party audit yet. They have not selected an auditor. So asking them to kind of move more quickly on that because it's now been a month.
Can we, Melissa, can we even informally ask you to do that so that we don't have that delay till our next meeting? Because I think the anxiety.
I'm shocked that they haven't. It's been a month for the audit. I mean, that's.
Well, and you add to the fact that.
That's unacceptable.
Basically, 15% of, 15% of what they've gone through, they found, is faulty, right? So there's a pattern of, of not, not delivering on time, but also not delivering the results. So I would add that to quality, right? So I would add that to it, that that's bothersome, to put it mildly.
I could draft the letter and then send it all to you and you could send your comments to me individually. So you make sure that it encompasses what you're looking for. Okay. And then the other thing, just to be aware of that I sent you today, is that the NTSB will be having a meeting on Friday at the Lawrence Library at 3 o'clock, and only 350 people, spaced only for 350 people, where they're going to be discussing their findings that they made last month in their report. So.
Will we have a representative there?
We certainly will have someone there, yep.
I think it would be potentially valuable to maybe summarize or pull something from that so that the broader community could, if not get resolution, at least be a little more informed than that.
Will that be filmed?
I don't know. I can ask that. I don't know. That's a great idea.
It'd be helpful. That's not to just pick on Columbia Gas, but to time something at 3:00 PM on a weekday. I mean, yet again, more inconvenience, because I think a lot of these people want, they want to know what happened. And frankly, I don't even know how they can give us a report when it sounds like it's not been resolved yet. But.
I could certainly ask if it's being filmed. Okay, so I will do that as an action item. And I'll get that letter out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to review the FY '21 budget calendar. I think everyone has a copy of that in their package. Let me pull it up. So we've already had our strategic meeting last week, and tonight we're going to be voting on the policy statement based on input from that meeting. And Melissa, I'll let you walk through the rest of it.
Sure. Obviously, this is my first year doing a budget here, so a little different everywhere you go. But we already have our capital improvement plan instructions distributed. The capital improvement plan requests are due next week. The revenue fixed cost review committee has had their initial meeting and is hoping to make a recommendation in the next two weeks. We'll be distributing our operating budget instructions mid-November. We're planning to present the five-year financial forecast at the beginning of December. Mid-December, you will get the CIP improvement plan, as will the finance committee. Superintendent's budget is due January 2nd. The town budgets are due to me and Lynn on January 17th. And then we will be having the CPA requests due February 7th. And we will be sending our budget request to you on February 10th. And then obviously, from there, we start having all of our prep for town meeting.
Very busy calendar over the next three months, four months. It's very.
It does. It just seems like boom, boom.
Yeah.
I'm a lunatic. I mean, look at January.
Yep. And the superintendent's missed the budget on January 2nd, so that means all for the holidays.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, they're finalizing that one. So very busy few months coming up. Any comments? Any comments or questions?
The school, school committee usually does two public hearings, right, including the night of the vote? Or is it only just one?
I believe it only required to do one. I don't know if they did you.
Okay.
Thank you again for hitting the ground running. This is a lot.
Very exciting.
This is a lot.
One formal hearing, but it's, you know, it's never needed.
I was going to say, rely on the former school committee members, but you're conflicting information right now.
They presented one night and then voted.
In terms of a formal hearing, like a public hearing, I think it's one.
One, yes.
But yes, there's multiple.
Okay.
We'll go with that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent items. The first item under consent is to accept the budget policy statement. So.
It was so small, I hadn't, I just thought it was easier.
Thank you.
So I know we did, I did this a little differently than what you're used to. But we did draft the regular budget policy statement, like you typically would put in the budget. Laurie did that. Thank you to Laurie. But then I created this spreadsheet, kind of what we talked about last time, which I thought, I assigned priorities. I'm obviously more than happy to change them, but it was just based on the conversation that we had. I tried to determine some realistic deliverables for this year. I assigned those to staff so that we would know who would be working on them. And the one thing that I'm suggesting is that we assign either one, sometimes two, depending on how big the projects are, selectmen leads to them, so that people have ownership over the goals and we can kind of all be working on them. I think it's great to have the strategic policy document, but to me, having kind of a working document helps us stay on track.
Yeah, this is good.
I love your priority list. I do not have a problem with anything that you put in. You know, delegating what's high, what's medium as well. Lot of continuing, but all good.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sue, do you want us to come back to you with areas where some of us would like to focus more?
That might make sense. I mean, we could go through them and we could see if we want to try to assign them tonight. If not, you could email me with what you were interested in, and I could try to slot you in based on that. As a chair, it's up to you how you want to handle it.
Well, you also made this editable, right?
I did.
So we could all look at it. And I mean, I wouldn't suggest everyone goes out there and starts changing things because we could be changing each other's priorities. But you could at least go out and review it. You know, so you're suggesting maybe go through these one at a time and just review the priorities on them?
I'm more thinking, I mean, if we want to change the priority deliverables, that's fine with me. I'm more wondering if you want to assign your selectmen leads tonight? If you want to assign the people who will be working on them?
Let's see. What's the best way we can do this? I would suggest that, you know, and I'm, this is my suggestion, I'm opening up for everybody else too, what you want to do, but review them. And maybe we can, since it is an editable document, maybe we can go out and just put our initials on the selectmen leads on ones that you're interested in, unless you have specific questions tonight that you want to get out there.
Maybe my deliverables aren't even what you want to see this year. I was just trying to think of ways to, you know, make them achievable and workable rather than just have them be more.
But I'm open, I'm open to whatever the board wants to do. If we want to go through these tonight, we can certainly do that.
I mean, there were some that stood out, some that I definitely know I have an interest in. I guess some that I'd want to reflect on. But I love that you laid it out this way.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, because when I started the packet, I was like, I think that this is a, it's kind of based along the same model that we followed with the master plan, where you assign the staff leads. And I felt like that was a really easy, not just an easy way for us to follow it, but I think that if you're a member of the community and you really want to dive this in, dive deep into what we're doing as a town, but also as a board of selectmen, I felt like this model really lays it out well, especially if you know what these initials stand for.
Right. I already signed plenty of things to Andrew.
I know. I saw a lot of eights.
You haven't been introduced to him.
So then, why don't we do that? Why don't we take some time to read through them? And, you know, if you have the ability, or you can go out and make changes to it, if not, we can just call them in and just, ones that you would be interested in as, if you wanted to be the lead on that, in that deliverable. So the ask is to review the goals, priorities in the deliverables, and then determine whether one, who on this board would want to be the lead on that particular goal and deliverable.
Just send your comments back to me, not the whole board. And additionally, maybe we'll put on the next agenda with the liaison assignments, because I've now formed that list, and we can kind of finalize those at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. And then we could check off a goal that we'll have already accomplished.
There you go.
Feels good.
All right, this is good. Thank you.
Good. I'm glad you liked it.
Okay, so that's that. We still need to discuss and vote on accepting the budget policy statement. So Melissa, do you want to walk us through that?
Sure, of course. So what we did, Laurie and I, was we took what we had our conversation about, and we tried to kind of prioritize the goals based on the list that we had created. And so for the financial, we included continuing to prioritize maintaining our AAA bond rating by developing budgets that are structurally balanced and continue to adhere to the financial reserve policies. We said that our priorities are going to be developing a long-term strategy for the Stevens Estate and continued collaboration with the school department to determine long-term strategic plan for the district. Under economic development, we said we were going to continue to implement action items contained in the town's master plan and work with developers to mitigate burdens of large developments in accordance with the master plan. We were going to be doing a revitalization of the downtown as a priority again, and also investing in infrastructure and streetscape to connect, to produce a design to connect the downtown area to the mills. For neighborhood enhancement, one of the top things we were going to do was a communication strategy regarding the Columbia Gas road reconstruction program, completing phases eight and nine of the playground master plan, which for next year will be Stevens Pond and Appline, and continuing to fund the capital plan for maintenance. The sidewalk plan, pedestrian safety will maintain as a goal. We are going to study whether or not there's town-owned property that can be used for future cell towers in order to alleviate needs in residential neighborhoods. And we are going to be developing a long-term street tree replacement and enhancement plan. For community development, we are trying to resolve any outstanding issue with the senior center and rec complex and begin construction in fiscal year '21, maximize partnerships with Merrimack College, begin the development of the facilities master plan two, which will include the three elementary schools, the middle school, the Salem Street Fire Station, and possibly other facilities. For public safety, we plan to undertake a municipal vulnerability preparedness planning and apply for grants for that. A continued focus on making sure that our public safety departments have the updated and appropriate equipment and resources, and continue to provide mentoring opportunities for the police and fire chiefs. In government philosophy, we are going to utilize a tracking system for annual departmental budget goals to provide monthly reports on the progress of those goals. We are going to develop requirements for annual reporting from boards and committees to the Board of Selectmen and assign liaisons to work with those boards and committees. We are going to create a master plan committee. We are going to study the salaries of non-union employees and update job descriptions. And we're also going to upgrade technology, implement any changes needed to maintain security. The next section just runs through what budget policies and financial reserve policies that the board has voted in the past. The last time we updated these was in 2015, so we may want to think about looking at those as far as OPEB or free cash policy or anything like that, because those are things that are important to us. The following section is just our reserve fund balances. And the section after that talks about how we go about developing the fiscal year '21 budget. I'm thanking Lynn for this. She worked very hard on getting all these numbers right and updating all of the analysis.
Great. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, motion approval of the strategic plan as presented.
As presented, but because their goals, but still subject to be amended, would you accept that as a friendly amendment? Because it's sort of a working progress.
Yeah, it's a document.
Yeah. Is everyone all right with that?
I was the only actual piece that we got to identify, liaisons.
Yeah. So I think if you could approve the budget policy statement, that would be great. We don't, I think we can not, yeah, this sheet, well, I'd like to actually include this sheet in the budget. I think it would be very helpful for the GFOA budget and for the public.
That's kind of what I was more.
Yeah. I think we can add that as a separate section, but having you accept the budget policy statement now kind of gives me and Lynn a little direction as we're moving into budget season.
Okay, I'll second that.
I appreciate that.
Okay, any further discussion on it? So we're approving the budget policy statement, and then the goals and deliverables. There is a separate document that will review and come back with recommendations for selecting leads for each goal and deliverable. Okay, so any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Your first, first big hurdle.
This is huge.
It's exciting.
More to clear.
All right, we're coming. We're ready.
All right, the next item on the agenda under consent is the request of the Patriotic Observance Committee to hold the annual Veterans Day Parade on Monday, November 11, 2019, beginning at 10:00 AM. Anybody here from the Patriotic Observance Committee? I do not see anybody.
No, it is, it is me, but it is, I am. But what's, what's in the paperwork is.
Okay. So normally, what happens is the parade will start downtown at 10:00 or, and then march down to Memorial Park across from the library, where we'll hold our observance and usually a very well-attended event. And I would encourage folks to come out and take part in that really sacred observance of Veterans Day. So with that, I'll hear a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Next, we have confirmed town manager appointment of Andrew Shapiro as Community and Economic Development Director.
So I'm very excited to bring the confirmation of my appointment to the board of Andrew. Andrew will be joining us from the city of Lowell, where he has served since 2017 as the Director of Economic Development, has really worked on a lot of business-friendly initiatives, which I think is going to be really important here. Before that, he was the Economic Development Planner in the city of Salem for four years. And prior to that, he was the Regional Planner for the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management in the city of Boston. He is AICP certified, which is very exciting. He attended Virginia Tech, as well as Syracuse University. Virginia Tech was for his masters, and Syracuse was for his bachelor's. He was very highly recommended from all of his references, which I checked. It seemed a little tipped that they were losing him, but I was happy that we were able to get him here in North Andover.
That's a good sign.
Great.
Right?
His current employers are mad that he's leaving.
It's always good. Make people mad all across the state.
Andrew, as long as you have a chance to come up and say anything if you'd like. You don't have to, but you're certainly welcome to.
I'll just quickly say thank you to Town Manager Murphy Rodriguez. I also want to thank the entire hiring committee, Kathy Darby, the Human Resources Director, Deputy Town Manager, D Casey, all the folks associated with the hiring process, all you folks, the Board of Selectmen, I really appreciate the time you took to talk to me the other day as well. I feel very warm and welcomed. I'm very excited to get started. This looks like it's going to be a very exciting place to work. And I've heard some great projects and priorities already come up, so just really eager to get started. So thank you so much for the warm welcome.
Thanks, Dana.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will hear a motion.
And I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to North Anova. We look forward to your, your starting date is?
So I start November 12.
November 12.
My first day is November 11. It's just holiday.
We're making them come anyway.
Okay. All right, so maybe we'll see you at the parade then. All right, thank you very much. And congratulations and good luck.
I can give you a few tips. It's called kachikawick. It's called Wire Hill.
We'll learn together.
Okay. Next, we have a couple appointments. The first is to the Sustainability Committee. Can Billy pass? Do. Do someone from the subappointment committee want to speak to this?
So, in interest of residents over on High Street, who's already been attending several of their meetings, and so that's not a committee that has a cap on the number of members, and so any person is eager to jump in, and certainly jump in before they're even appointed.
Yeah.
As a community volunteer, that we will legally embrace. So I would move approval of Kim Pass's appointment to the Sustainability Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and as usual, I would like to thank Kim Pass for stepping up and being part of the Sustainability Committee, and also thank all of our volunteers, they really are the heart of what makes this town run so well. So with that, I'll hear a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, next we have appointment to the Board of Registrazers. So there is an opening for the Democratic Town Committee on the Board of Registrazers. The Democratic Town Committee brought to us three names, and we will be hearing a nomination for one of those three names. The three names that were brought to us were Colleen Martin, Michael List, and Jennifer Fresen. So we will hear a nomination, I will hear a nomination for one of those three.
Mr. Chair, move into Board of Selectmen, appoint Colleen Martin of Chestnut Street to the Board of Registrazers of Voters.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Colleen Martin for 50 Chestnut Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations, Colleen. All right, next on the agenda, we'll move to licensing. I have a motion.
Motion to move into licensing.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, the first item we have is a request from Catherine Bibbo for 12 one-day all alcohol licenses for winter lights at Stephen Coolidge Place from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on November 22nd, 23rd, 29th, and 30th, December 6th and 7th, 13th, 14th, 20th, 21st, 27th, and 28th. As you guys will recall in our last meeting, there were quite a number more applications, so they had requested a license for every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from the weekend before Thanksgiving through the New Year, and they've amended that request to just the Friday and Saturday of that time period. Based on our discussion, I think we asked them to go back and speak with the butters who had had some concerns to try and come up with a more workable solution. So they've amended their request to Friday and Saturday. I see we have some butters here, so I will perhaps let them make, I don't know if you guys waited to make public comment until this section of the meeting. I think normally we would have done it in the beginning of the meeting, no?
No, I think it's just the hearing.
But whatever, anyway, I welcome you to make a public comment now if you would like. Yes, can you sign in to the public comment? Thank you.
My name is Anja from Moston. So Kelly Cormier, I live at 169 Andover Street. I know all of my neighbors on Wood Lane, there's only four homes there, everyone has reached out over the past few days. We all share the same concerns, different angles, different things that are concerned, different ones of us, but we all share the same concerns. I think a lot of the data speaks for itself in terms of the growth and drastic change of the Stevens Coolidge Estate. Put together some actual hard numbers, so you can look and see what the growth has been. For example, in 2016, there was 43 events. This year, there's 221. In 2016, there was one liquor request. This year, with the ones that are getting requested, there'll be 36. So it's a 3,000% increase in liquor licenses.
Thank you very much.
Being requested. And I'm just surprised that this is happening in a residential district, and would ask the board, what other residential districts in town would this be okay? There are over 200 events a year. What other neighbor in a residential district could do this? 36 times a year, having, you know, selling alcohol. If any of my other neighbors did that, had parties 36 times a year with 30 to 700 people showing up, I guess I'm disappointed that that's allowed in this residential neighborhood, but I'm not seeing this anywhere else in a residential neighborhood. And there's a lot of changes happening. I mean, our ask is that you deny any of the additional alcohol permits with this request, the two requests on the agenda that would take the request for this calendar year to Myself and the Rivers family and my family were asking that you deny all of them until these issues are resolved in terms of the Stevens Coolidge Place turning into an event center. Is that what's supposed to happen in this residential district? No one's reached out to me from the estate since the last meeting to talk about the issues. So I'm not sure what we've resolved, but nothing from the aspect of myself and the Rivers family. And then, I won't read my email, because I'm sure hopefully everybody read it, but would like to keep that in your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment related to this?
I suppose you signed something?
Yes, there's a public comment log, if you can just.
She picked it, she got by.
Oh.
That wasn't her. That's okay.
Thanks.
I just wanted to echo, my name is Mike Fina, I live on Old Village Lane, 124, at the end of the cul-de-sac. My property abuts the Stevens land. And it also, you know, we're towards the end of the street, we also get some of the traffic sound in the headlights from Chickering Road, so we already deal with some noise. Thankfully, they repaved Chickering Road about four years ago, I believe, so we resolved the sound of the dumpster trucks and the, you know, coming down 5:00 in the morning and the banging, you know, waking us up, so I think the state took care of that, I'm not sure maybe the town, but thank you for that. Anyways, I just want to echo Melissa's, you know, sentiments regarding the, you know, the frequency of events at the Stevens Coolidge Estate. You know, like she had mentioned, it's turned into a bit of a event center mentality. It's gone from, you know, somewhere to visit, to gardens, you know, different events. I am a card-carrying member of the trustees as well, so we do enjoy living there, but the frequency of events and the future planning of the renovation of the property, there's going to be an infiltration basin about 70 feet behind my lot line. So again, I know this is regarding the liquor permits and everything, but again, I just want to express my concern. We're, you know, there's some other neighbors that are not here as well that live on Old Village Lane, and, you know, we're in complete agreement with the folks on Wood Lane regarding the increased activity, the noise, the safety concerns. You know, I walk behind my stone wall, restack rocks, and I find like little, like liquor bottles, things like that, you know, that, you know, whether the kids go out there late night, I'm not sure, but, you know, there is a concern, so. And I sent an email to all of you as well this morning, so I won't bore you with rereading that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so we did obviously receive more than just these two, you want to make a public comment as well?
I'll just be, I live at.
Yeah, can.
I live at, my name is Jacqueline Fleury, I live at 114 Old Village Lane, and I would just, she had the same concerns as Mike, we actually are neighbors. And I'll just read an email that my husband had written, you may have received it, but he, it says, "We have lived happily at 114 Old Village Lane since 1999. Below is a letter we sent to Mr. Goldberg and the Planning Board. I discussed how the proposed Stevens Coolidge expansion would negatively affect our property. I would like to add a couple more thoughts. In a conversation with one of the Stevens Coolidge representatives, after the first town meeting, I asked if they were willing to modify their plans to accommodate North Andover residents' concerns. I suggested that if the Stevens Coolidge representatives and the North Andover residents were together, we could come up with a plan that we will be happy with. To my shock and disappointment," this might be a little harsh, "her answer was a blunt no, that's not going to happen. The answer provided me with a window into the soul of the Stevens Coolidge intentions. I feel like we have to defend the town of North Andover from an overreaching expansion whose intentions seem to be centered on the self-interest building the coffers of the trustees' reservations. Our town will be burdened with more traffic, more noise, and more potential for crime due to the many alcohol-related events. Thank you for your patience."
Thank you. Would you mind signing as well, so we have your name and address? Any other public comment? Okay, so obviously, a lot of these comments and ones that we got emailed about were related to the overall expansion, I think, of the estate, not just the liquor license. I did ask Town Manager Murphy Rodriguez to investigate for us the applicability of the bylaw, so I looked into the bylaw. Obviously, the expansion plans are in front of the Planning Board, I think they're in front of the Planning Board, or at least planned to be in front of the Planning Board in the near future. It is a non.
Conservation, too.
And conservation, right. It is, I think, a non-conforming use to the zone, residential zone, obviously. And I was looking at the bylaw and the fact that a non-conforming use, if there's going to be substantial change to a structure or site that changes it from the original non-conforming use to something bigger that requires ZBA approval. So I asked our Town Manager to look into that and understand that a bit, explain that a bit more to me, make sure I understand, because it could be that there needs to be a ZBA approval as well as Planning Board's site plan review.
But that would be up to the building inspector to determine that, right?
Yes, so we had discussed that as well. So I guess that was the question I wanted to verify, is have the trustees gone, had a discussion with the building inspector, and is it, has it been determined whether or not they have to go to ZBA or not to get an approval based on this plan? I mean, I'm just, I wanted to communicate to the folks here and who sent us an email that I understand a concern, it's not necessarily something that this liquor license, license commission is going to address. It's potentially a ZBA question, it's also a Planning Board question in terms of what is allowed to be done at the site. Right? I mean, am I, does anybody have any other comment on that, I guess? Clearly, the liquor license, you know, feeds into that a bit. So what we have before us tonight is the liquor license for the winter nights, lights, and obviously, subsequent on our agenda is the booze and brews, I think it's called, the pumpkin trail with the beer truck, which is item C on our agenda, so I guess I should have read that as well, because really, these comments apply to both, obviously, I'm sure. So I actually, I apologize, I just realized we had someone from the Stevens Estate here, so I don't know if you want to make a comment regarding.
Stevens.
I mean, Stevens, sorry, Stevens Coolidge. The two Stevens names.
Lots of Stevens.
Lots of, yeah, really.
They're all not related.
Trip me up. I don't know if you want to make a statement about these requests, I mean, I know they're technically from the, well, at least in the booze and brews, it's a request of the beer truck guy, but Stevens Coolidge Place, if you have a comment overall on the liquor license requests, that would be great.
Kathy McDonald, Director of the Stevens Coolidge Place, regarding the only liquor permit request from the Stevens Coolidge Place, it's the winter lights, and we heard your concerns, and that's why we modified it. And we did reach out to some of the neighbors, and I think you got a positive letter from one of them that, you know, it is an event that is not narrowly defined as, you know, families with kids, but families of all types and shapes from all over the place, adults, grandparents, adult children. And this is just one of the amenities for this festival, to enrich the festival and make it a nice evening. It's a very, very limited amount of serving alcohol, and certainly not everyone that's there is going to be buying drinks. The other request that is in front of you is from another entity, the event being located, obviously, at Stevens Coolidge.
But you guys are hosting the Brews and.
Absolutely.
I cannot say that phrase, but I mean, like on the Facebook.
Yes.
Event, it says.
Right.
Brews and booze at Stevens Coolidge.
Right, it is, it's like a notch brewing type of event, yes.
Yeah.
So my understanding, and maybe you can correct me, of the licensing permit, and I do know that you have the discretion to change things, but it does say that, it doesn't tie it to a location, and it does say an entity, another enterprise can get a malt and liquor license where only the nonprofit can get the alcohol one-day license. It also says that a license can be attained for 30 consecutive days or spread out during the year, but it's tied to the entity that's asking for the license, not the location. Is that a correct understanding of how I read it?
It is correct that an entity can apply for 30 licenses regardless of location.
Okay.
Is the legal language of the document. For me, I mean, I'm considering if you have two employees who are both submitting applications on behalf of the Stevens Coolidge Place, I mean, that's still a Stevens Coolidge Place asking for a license.
That's absolutely not correct. The second entity is not a part of.
Wait, no, I was giving an example, I wasn't saying these two.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I was saying, in a situation where Stevens Coolidge Place is hosting an event, and they're marketing it as their event, and it's their event, and you're going to have request an alcohol license for your event, to me, that's, that's your event asking, whether it's you or another manager who works there actually requesting it, to me, I don't see why that should matter still, your event, versus somebody has their wedding there, they rent out the space, and they request a license, well, then they're a different count, because they're an individual, they're not, you're not hosting a wedding, you know what I mean?
So when you put like, when a brewery requests, is that in that same situation like a wedding?
Well, that's, I guess, for, I mean, and regardless of what the license, the bylaws say, the bylaws says we can give 30, but ultimately, it's us to decide, so we can decide to give one, or we can decide to give 30. I'm just saying, my own feeling is, when I consider the number here, I'm thinking about the number of events that they are, that the Stevens Coolidge Place is hosting as its own event versus an individual renting the space and having an event or something. I don't know, I don't know how I answer that question. To me, if I look on the Facebook page, I see Brews and Booze. That, I have to say that very slowly, that seems like a Stevens Coolidge Place event to me, that doesn't seem like something different.
It is, it is, yet a caterer or other enterprise is applying for the license.
Yes, I get that, but I mean.
I think the first argument about neighbors, given the neighbors, I mean, it's not irrelevant in a disrespectful way, it's irrelevant in the sense that if I live on Wood Lane, it doesn't matter because they're applying for the license, it matters where they're having a party.
Yeah.
I think you're hitting on, I think, the key issue here, which is, Kelly kind of brought it to light, which is the trustees have this wonderful asset, then you have identified an opportunity, an untapped opportunity, excuse the term, to build a business there and to bring business in, and that's moved very quickly over a relatively short period of time. And I think there's sort of a bigger question here that's been brought up, which is, how does that relationship work when we have the. does that relationship work when we have this wonderful building and facility that has served and provided these things over the years, which now has shifted in how it draws people in and the scope of events there? It's no different than, really, some of the conversation we had for the Stevens Estate, the other side of town. And, and I think that's a, that's a bigger question here, again, you know, pertaining to the license. We can make a decision tonight, but I do think it does bring up the whole issue of the relationship between the trustees, who have an asset in our town, and our, our community. And when there's such a dramatic shift like this, it would seem to me it's no different than a business that's sort of running from a storefront, that goes from just walk-in business to having, you know, UPS trucks there around the clock. Somehow, the neighbors and the businesses around them have to have a discussion about how that fits now, because something's changed dramatically, and something's changed dramatically here. Seems great, we've just got to figure out how to make, make that work. And so, I don't think that we can continue with just sort of letting this roll until, I think, we as a town have a more comfortable discussion about that relationship and really where you're going with this. I mean, if you have a mission to make this into a destination-location, that's your prerogative to have that mission, but let's, but bring that with much more transparency and figure out a way that, to fit that within the town and the neighborhood. And I think it's just, it's moved really quickly here, and we haven't had that discussion yet. So, I think there's an opportunity for us to sort of ease into that a little bit now with this licensing opportunity, so, end of what I said.
So, you're referring to the bigger expansion plans and not just the licensing?
Not just the licensing, but we only have the licensing in front of us, but I think we have to think about it. I would encourage us to think about it within the context of where this is all going, because I can't see you saying we want to do less than this next year. If I had a business, I would keep, keep going forward.
Well, I don't look at, at straight as a business as much as it is our mission. We're a 125-year-old organization, and we don't just conserve land so no one uses it. We have welcomed over 200,000 people across Massachusetts this, this year to enjoy hikes, walks, programs, events with or with alcohol. And that is, you know, you know, businesses or missions change over time based on people's needs. And, you know, our mission is really to get people outdoors, to enjoy it with their friends, to enjoy it as a walk by themselves. So, businesses, nonprofits, and uses of land change over time, and I don't see why it, you would have thought it would have stayed static and no one would use it, because we want people to come use our property. So, I think that's the tug-of-war that's going on. You know, we are trying to engage many different people from not only the North Andover and Andover community, but from Lawrence and other communities to come and enjoy this property. Many people are very reluctant to pass that stone wall on their own, what the same people that might not walk into a library or MFA. It's through activities and events that you bring people across the portal, and they go, "Oh, my goodness, let's come next weekend for a picnic with our kids." So, that's really what it's about. It's about change and about how we're trying to involve people and engage people at the property.
Madam Chair, I think from the, the thing that I find the most troubling, and it actually is, is honestly, it's against the law, is people bringing in open containers.
Pardon?
People bringing in open containers.
Where?
That to me, and you can't, whether you have a restaurant or a lounge or something, there is...
I don't know where that has happened, to my knowledge. I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't know either, but that's one of the neighbors' concerns, and we certainly have the gentleman in the back of the room who talked about little nip bottles.
But the gentleman across the room is on the completely other side of the property where I don't think any of our guests are hanging out drinking nips. I mean, who would know?
People bring a lot of nips.
So, having said that, whether you own a restaurant or a pub or whatever, nobody should be bringing in their own.
Of course not.
I don't know what your suggestions would be to make sure that that is not happening.
Well, any, first of all, any event involving alcohol, we do have a police detail, and we would continue to do that. People certainly should be checked, you know, I've, we've had picnics where we've had people listening to concerts, and we've had wineries come, and people don't have their own wine bottles. They know that if they want a glass of wine, they can go purchase one from the winery. So, it hasn't been apparent to me seeing people bring in bottles open.
No speakable contact, you can put that on the...
If that's a problem, we certainly, you know, will make sure it's addressed.
Maybe it's signage or asking people when they come in that know that you're not allowed to bring in your own.
I think that's on our website, all of that, but you're right.
But that, to me, that is the most...
Maybe a sign would be helpful.
Yeah, I think you need to remind the public that we're so delighted to have you here, however, we do not allow people bringing in their own alcohol, or, as you would not be allowed to do that in a...
Right.
...a pub or a restaurant. There, I mean, there are some restaurants without liquor licenses in past, but that's different.
Well, I think that's the reason you ask for a liquor license, so you can control the flow of alcohol and make sure that doesn't happen.
I think that, honestly, if I was a neighbor, I would find that, that troubling, because you lose control, and you can't see it, honestly, if they put it in clothing or whatever, you can't see it. But I think that's a way you can somewhat lose control when people start bringing their own in. So, that, to me, resonates.
Well, I will certainly look into it. It's nothing that's been brought up to me before.
This is not quite the same question, but it made me think of it. There were some comments made to us in, in email comments about BYO, Bring Your Own Alcohol weddings.
We don't do weddings.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So...
There's a link in the website, it's listed.
No, it isn't. We do wedding ceremonies, brief ceremonies with a justice of peace, of the peace, and then people go on to their wedding site. We do not do weddings.
You're saying you don't have receptions there?
Right.
You might have a ceremony there in the garden.
I have a ceremony, yes.
You don't have a reception there.
And most, I can't...
It's probably not too far-fetched that some unknowing, excited family member or friend pops a bottle of champagne right after it, which wouldn't necessarily be your fault, but I could certainly see that happening, and congratulations, they're married, but yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Madam Chair, just specifically for this license, because I...
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, let's get back to it.
...a little bit to their concerns.
No, I wasn't, I was not diminishing that. I, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't lose the opportunity or the point that, I'm really excited about the Stevens Coolidge House, being in North Andover, I'm excited about the expansion of events, and I think that we, as a board, have really talked about how exciting it is. However, I think that we, I, I have often not appreciated, certainly at times even have forgotten just how much of a convenience it likely is when certain events are happening as often as they do, if you're in a butter and just purchase next to. An event facility in the way that it's become, now, I, again, as someone who doesn't live next to and has lived with it, I think it's a neat asset. That doesn't mean that what's being said by neighbors falling on deaf ears for me. Now, you are entitled to have events within reason regardless of alcohol, but where you're asking for alcohol for this event, and it was a successful event last year, my guess would be, I would think that the neighbors, regardless, would have concerns, and our liquor is still a lot of concern outside of our control, would have this without alcohol. But I broadly, absolutely hear their concern, and would really be, I personally would be in favor of scaling it back, but I personally want to just call out, and I didn't appreciate this specifically last meeting, I focused on Thursday, and I really focused on the fact that Thursday and Friday are both school days, and that satellite parking is happening at a school facility, during which time students are still going to be there for kid stop. And so, I can't, I can't reconcile as a selectman, as a member of this licensing board, approving a license on a school day when you said that satellite parking will be happening on their property, and so, every move would be, I don't know why that, I find it interesting that that was allowed, I don't know who approved that, not to...
I don't, I don't understand what that has to do with alcohol. People will be just leaving their, first of all, we have spoken, obviously, with Mr. Clark, the principal, and we have a traffic plan, and he did not perceive a problem that the last pickup of a student may be at 6:00, and our people would be mostly arriving and being shuttled down to the site, and then maybe coming back, you know, real early would be 5:30.
Well, that's what we discussed last week, the events track at 5:00 p.m.
Right.
And it would be about a 30-minute cycle for each visit.
For each new group, right.
And so, that people would be coming back, well, soon, they're still there. And so, that, I mean, I guess I just, again, however minor, however benign the type of drinking that would occur, I just can't reconcile those, I mean, I have no problem with people going out to dinner and grabbing rice for dinner, I just think that it's ironic that we would be in a position where we would approve a license contingent upon satellite parking that would be happening at a school where students are still there and would be leaving during the time that attendees at the event that we'd be approving a license for would be coming back and forth.
I have the same concern about that. I mentioned that last week.
It is, it is complicated, because people can go out to dinner, as you said, and we don't, we still allow them to park in different places among, it is, it is tricky, but would you suggest, then, that the time for the hot chocolate that has a little something extra in it doesn't start till, say, 5:30 or something like that, that's out of the cycle?
Additionally, we also have our parking lot on Chestnut Street, where if it was going to be a problem, which it wasn't perceived as a problem, we could fill that parking lot first and then move on to the other parking lot at 6:00.
Well, the other question would be, would you be amenable to having it on a Saturday and Sunday only versus a Friday and Saturday? Or shifting the time? Or just Saturday?
Yeah, I will say that I personally am in favor of approving it for Saturdays, not wanting the neighbors to think that those concerns are falling on deaf ears on me as a selectman, I just...
Saturday, Sunday.
Well, A, the application...
Well, there's no one at the school.
I know that, but we have time.
But that's...
There's time.
And so, at this point, I mean, I would say, given what was, given what has been presented, I'm not in favor of Friday, I'm in favor of Saturday, based on the information that we have. But I'm sympathetic to the complaints of the neighbors, and they're not, they're not unfounded complaints. I think that the simple sentence that Kelly said, which is, would we tolerate, these events are allowed to happen regardless of whether or not we approve them, but certainly, I would think if there was somebody having an event every single week at their home in a residential neighborhood, and then all of a sudden were coming to us to ask for additional approvals to enhance those events, it, it's not an unfair observation. I mean, as much as I really like the Stevens Coolidge, and overall it's an asset to our community, at the end of the day, if the residents of this community want to go to a town meeting and rezone the site and have that discussion and have everybody weigh in, that's a different conversation, but...
But it's a, it's a nonprofit, there's a different set of zones for nonprofit, but I don't...
The impact on people's lives, though, are not different.
It's not. I just, I checked the zoning before this meeting. I mean, it's in, for the R3, which is what it's in, it talks about nonprofit for educational purposes, but alcohol drinking isn't related to educational purposes. Otherwise, it's a non-conforming use that can't be changed substantially without ZBA approval. And I guess the residents, at least, would argue that this is quite a substantial change if you're increasing events 3,000 percent, but the zoning specifically...
But I think you're going on chopping, and we should be talking about the license.
No, but it does weigh into it, though. I mean, I agree, we're not deciding that, but it weighs into our decision, I feel like, a little bit.
I guess I would, just to comment on that, but is it a moot point about the alcohol, or you're just assigning that to the zoning?
Right.
Wait, sorry.
If it's, if it's a nonprofit?
You, I was responding to you saying it's a nonprofit, and so...
What I'm saying, is there anything stated in that particular zoning about them serving alcohol at an event? That, you know what, it is, I think Dick's right, we're getting too far off the subject.
So, I actually would say that, I meant more as selectmen or as licensing commissioners, if we're approving licenses to enhance and expand events there, then that's when it does become a conversation for us to have as a board, where we're hearing neighbors consistently, and I will say consistently, because as a select board, we don't often have many people come, and I will say that this neighborhood has, since I've been elected, the most reliable attendees at these meetings. And when seven people send emails to us, that's a lot, when I consider that during that entire marijuana debate, I only got 12 opposition emails, and you look at how the town felt about that. So, when seven people are sending me emails and us emails saying we have these concerns, when people are consistently attending our meetings saying we have these concerns, right now, we aren't talking, we are absolutely not talking about other things beyond this license, but the license we are being asked to approve would enhance or expand an existing event, and we're hearing from residents that they've already seen dramatic enhancements and expansions to their events that are happening there, and they're feeling an impact, and they're feeling an impact with all due respect to the other neighbors. So, Kelly, you're here often with us, but we're seeing even new neighbors and new faces. I mean, this isn't, I'm happy to hear frequently from Kelly, but this is not clearly just one neighbor, as we've seen from email and attendees at this meeting, and so, I, I love the Stevens Estate, I like it as somebody who doesn't have to live in it.
Stevens Coolidge Place.
Stevens Coolidge, yes.
He loves the Stevens Estate.
Yes, but you know what, and rightly, in same way, events happening at both facilities do not impact my personal life, because I don't live in those neighborhoods. And so, I mean, I, I hear them, I hear them as residents saying that approving this license will likely increase turnout, I think that's why they're here this evening. And if there's no increase in turnout, then will it increase turnout, do you think?
I don't think so. The only advertising it's had is from your articles from this board meeting.
So, we're not going to negatively impact turnout, then, by not approving them?
It, I have, this, we're, okay, for example, when we talk about the Halloween event, we are advertising like with knots that there's alcohol there.
Which, as a side point, I find, I think that that's very inappropriate, actually, that it's advertised as an alcohol event when we haven't approved an alcohol license yet. Just for future reference, I don't think that things should be advertised as having alcohol with, when you don't have the right to have alcohol right now.
Right.
So, I find that, okay, anyway. So, that one, clearly, I mean, I think...
Right.
I mean, are you selling, you're selling tickets to that event, too, right? The booze and brews, or no?
I believe so, yes.
So...
So, you'll have to strike a...
I mean, that's, that's a problem, yeah. And also, it's October 24th, which is...
Three days from now.
Three days from now.
Right.
I mean, that's really not, not okay. We need to have...
No, I understand this.
I know it's not on you, because Jacob, the name is the, the beer truck, but I mean, ultimately, it is on you guys, because you're the ones hosting this event, and I assume got these guys to come be the vendors at it, so...
Right.
And what I'd like to say way in here is, you know, I would be a lot more sympathetic to a lot of these events and causes if I knew that you were working with the neighbors. And what I heard tonight was alarming to me. If, if that's truly what happened, and those were truly the words that were used, then I find that very concerning, because you need, you know, we need, we all need to be good neighbors, and having this beautiful property placed in the middle of a neighborhood and having some major expansion plans, I think you need to be good partners with the neighbors and hear their concerns and work with them. And I think, you know, again, I, I'm...
Well, I question the validity of that comment.
Excuse me, Kathy, please. I would say that we need to, you know, make sure that we're working with the neighbors, and if I'm, from what I heard tonight, that, that may not be happening. We may not be giving any give and takes here. We, you know, in, most of the time when we're talking about developments, you know, the neighbors have to live there in perpetuity, or however long they live there on their homes, so they're the ones that are mostly impacted. So, I think it's important that we work with the neighbors and understand what their concerns are, and there's always some gives and takes. And even with these licensing, I know we spoke about it last time, but I guess what I'm hearing now is this maybe wasn't, again, not discussed with the neighbors, which I thought was one of the things that might occur, was that you would talk with the neighbors and understand what event, what dates they were, you know, or what they were amenable to. So, when we came back, we wouldn't have opposition, because there was some discussion that occurred, and everyone was kind of on the same page. So, I think it's important regardless, and, you know, this point being pointed out is a, is a big thing, to have that number of events. I mean, I love going to these events, I go to a lot of them, and I hope they continue, but I think they need to continue in partnership with the neighborhood to make sure that they're, and I know you guys have. There was a case where the stage was next to, I think it was Kelly, your house, right? And you guys listened, and you moved it. That was, that was an example of working with the neighbors. I think we still, you need to continue that and make sure that you're hearing them.
I did meet with one of the neighbors last week, and we had a very wonderful conversation, and we recognized each person is a professional coming from a different point of view, one is a resident, and one is someone who's running a nonprofit, and we agreed to disagree. The bigger issue is, I don't think it's the alcohol at all, I think it's the number of events, and over time, that may change and be reduced. But I think that's the crux to the real issue, and... And certainly, there's no neighbor I've ever said I wouldn't listen to. We've had, on the other subject, we've had many opening meetings and meetings with a couple of neighbors at a time and have continued to do, do that. So I don't think that was a fair comment.
Well, let's get, I think we need to just sort of get back to the cuss of the matter of the days, perhaps the hours, the amount, how, I, I really personally would like to see something done about making sure people entering the facility of the event are not bringing things in. Just, that's how it gets out of control. Madam Chair?
Yes, so do I have any motion?
Well, no, there's a person in the back of the-
Sorry.
I was going to say, you know, Kathy hasn't, she has, I sat down with her before to discuss the expansion plan, so she has been receptive to-
Okay, we'll take you for that.
...with us. So I don't want to make it appear as if I'm saying, nope.
Okay. It was one anecdote that was conveyed to us this evening. Yeah, so there was one anecdote that was conveyed to us this evening. So thank you for sharing that other side of it. And we all have been in this long enough, we know there's always two different sides to everything and so, but thank you for sharing that.
Okay, so we, we have, let's take the winter lights first. We have the request for Fridays and Saturdays from 5:00 to 8:00 to have an all alcohol. Let me verify, is it all alcohol? Sorry, I'm not looking at it. Okay.
It is.
An all alcohol license. So I think we've had a lot of discussion. Do we have-
So I'll make the motion for, so we can have further discussion, I guess. Move the Board of Selecting, asking as licensing commissioners, approve the request of Catherine Bevo for 12 one-day all alcohol licenses for winter lights at Stevens Coolidge Place from 5:00 to 8:00 on November 22nd, 23rd, 29th, 30th, December 6th, 7th, 13th, 14th, 21st, 27th, and 28th, 2019, as presented.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
I can't support Friday night for the reason that, that Phil stated. Honestly, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the concerns of the, of the neighbors. I do think that it's changing substantially from its original nonconforming use to something more of an event place rather than a nice garden that people might go visit occasionally. And maybe, and clearly, that's their objective. But that needs to be approved. And I, by, I think, until I hear differently, I feel like that needs to be approved by the zoning board. And until that is, I mean, us granting a license is, is carrying it in that direction, helping carry it in that direction. So I just have, I have reservations about any of them, but I guess I would be, I could be supportive of a Saturday. I would amend it.
So I'm, I'm amenable to an amendment, or a kind of amendment.
To, to what?
Well, I mean, I, I read the article as, as requested, so I wasn't at liberty, I think, to change that because it was requested by the protester. So if there's an amendment that needs to be made, I mean, actually, you should be saying this to the chair, so.
Do I do it? So, oh, I ask, sorry, I'm learning, I'm still learning this, this role of licensing chair, so I have to ask the, a protester to make an amendment to their-
No, someone else on the board has to do it for me.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, I would amend the temporary license, the one-day licenses, so that they only apply to the Saturday of the dates that Selectmen, Valen Court read.
So it would be the 23rd of November, the 30th of November, the 7th of December, the 14th of December, the 21st of December, and the 28th of December.
Those are the Saturdays?
Yes. Second.
All right, any further discussion on that amendment?
Well, I, I actually have, I want to carry forward the amendment that, yes, we would grant the licenses subject to, that they have proper signage and posting of not being allowed to bring in your own alcohol to this event somewhere, whether it be there or in the parking lot. Anybody attending the event cannot bring in their, first of all, it's just against the law. You can't go and be drinking in public places. But, but, so that I would like to add to-
That's an amendment to the amendments.
Well, actually, it goes, no matter which way-
I think we got to kind of, more than we 20.
Okay, but I still want to talk to, you're both saying for Saturday, is anybody amenable to Saturday and Sunday?
I, I'd actually like to see, I'd like to see Saturday because frankly, I-
No, I'm just, we're in the discussion phase, that's what I'm-
I'd like to see Saturday because I, it's kind of like a catch, it looked unintentional with the residents are saying, it's kind of a catch 22. If we think that alcohol enhances turnout at these events, then we're not doing a service to the neighbors. And if alcohol doesn't enhance turnout, then that means we're not hurting the events. And so I think that that's, it's only one or the other. We're either driving up turnout with these votes, in which case I don't think that the neighbors are at all misplaced in their, their concerns being raised with us. And so that's why I'd really be curious to see if, for an event like this, where it's being built as a family event, is the presence of alcohol actually causing a spike? And then, again, for us, we have so many limited tools in our arsenal as licensing board and as elected representatives of these neighbors, that I think I personally would, it would inform my decisions moving forward because I-
But you're, how are you going to determine that?
I know, you can't-
Saturday and Sunday are completely different days. I mean-
I, I want to look at just how the turnout is for one-
But it could be, you had to, it could go with weather, it could go with just the enticement of the event. It's hard to, it's hard to-
I appreciate that. My apologies.
But you're saying, you're saying you would, you would support Saturday and not Sunday because you want to compare the difference between attendance?
I'm, frankly, I would, I hear the concerns of the neighbors, and I could absolutely see why not having, my, my point being about the enhancement or not enhancing the event. If it doesn't harm the event to not have alcohol-
Just don't have it at all.
Yeah, but I, I, in fairness, would like to see, so-
I see, I see.
That's, the, the protester has asked for a license. They do not think that it will harm the event to not have it. And they do not think it will enhance the event to have it. And I think that as a select board, it would be interesting to see how, if that is actually the case, as we consider things moving forward.
And the way we would do that is to deny the license and see what the-
Well, no, because last year, they had, last year, the event happened without alcohol. And so let's put in a license.
I see.
Let's put a license on one of the nights this year. It's a Saturday night. It doesn't impact any of the concerns that we had earlier about the schools. And it's also an event that I think you get the full day out of it because it's not a school night or a work night.
I, I was unclear on your comparison. So you're saying we can compare it to last year where there was no alcohol and this year and see what the turnout is.
And, and do people, as a result, they'll funnel from one day to another because of the presence of it. I mean, it's, again, for us, making future decisions where we know that this is a request that comes before us regularly, not just for winter lights, but overall for how this facility is operating. Where we have that many residents that are in Quim, and it is in the middle of a residential neighborhood, unless things are overall permanently going to change with how that area is zoned and what the mission of that facility is, I mean, I also think that these neighbors probably deserve some reliable direction from us as well.
I appreciate what you're trying to do. I just think it's, I don't know that it's really an exact science, is what I'm trying to say. Not, I appreciate that you're trying to gather information, but I don't, again, a lot of it could depend on the weather, the day, whether people are, it's just really hard to gather really accurate information from it.
Yeah, but in general, you could get, for the range of dates, you could get an overall average attendance.
Well, you'd have to flip it from Sunday to Saturday or something like that.
I, I'm-
You know what, we're not going anywhere with it. We're not going anywhere with it.
This was a successful event last year.
Okay, so-
Without alcohol.
All right, so the, the, sorry.
So what's to, what's to prevent Stevens Coolidge and the neighbors to come before us after the first round in, at the end of November to say, this has worked great, we'd like to make a change, or we've got clear feedback as to direction? I mean, the, the door isn't absolutely closed to December, right?
Well, technically, we like to get 30 days notice on licensing.
Yes, I, I agree. But, but there's still, so there's an opportunity here.
There's ample time to come back.
There's still time to come back. And I, I guess that's the other thing that gives me comfort, sort of with, where I think we're all leaning here, which is there's an opportunity to have those real discussions and, and maybe take shape. Maybe it will or won't affect what you can do in December and going forward, but there's still another, there's still time. So I-
May I, may I suggest that maybe a more reflective bit of information is the number of patrium, patrons on that day and how many legal adults opted for the special drink out of the number. So if 100 people come in 25, we're interested, I'm just saying that for numbers, would be more indicative of the draw, but-
So a friendly amendment you would make would be to-
About my fourth one right now.
We would, we would grant it, but request that they track the number of alcohol sales.
I think it's might be a little bit more reflective-
I agree.
And then the weather doesn't come into play or whatever, but-
I, I think he can still get the difference between last year, and that's fine, but I would also be interested to know if 500 people come, how many buy alcohol? I think that's interesting to know, sure.
And then if that tracks with, on a day that is not being offered, that you still have 500 people, to me, it maybe could pull a little bit more.
Date is always fun. I just, I think, I think the neighbors, whether they're drinking or not, doesn't matter, is it driving more people to the, to the event?
And I, I-
That's why, I'm obviously looking for more data, but-
Me, too. Yeah, I suppose you could combine a few different things, but.
I think, I think a point that I want to make is, this is an event that happened without alcohol last year. It was a remarkably successful event by there. It was a remarkably successful event by here compared to last year.
I believe so. I wasn't here, but there were, I was corrected last time, there was alcohol here last year.
There was alcohol last year.
Yes, and at our Stockbridge property, there was alcohol in the same method that we, last year, and that's-
There was alcohol at the North Anniver one? I thought I went to it.
They were, not every night.
No, it was one of the beer gardens.
There was, I think, there was-
Most people weren't interested in beer at, at 30 degrees.
Oh, so there was, there was, they were complimentary then tapping the same type of meeting?
No, no, I mean, we had a, a beer garden come in to serve alcohol apparently on several of the nights.
It wasn't every night.
It wasn't every night.
We can look back on the record, I think I was present here. So it was some nights, not every night.
Okay, I, I feel like we've had a lot of discussion. We have a, do we have any new comment to make?
So you have like three, three amendments to my motion.
Yeah, so I have, so we have a motion, the, the current motion is for Saturday nights-
Deal with the amendments for us, right? So-
Yeah, we did, we'll take them for us. So my amendment is-
Did you have a second, a third, second amendment?
The one that I'm most interested in, that regardless that they need to post and put on your website.
So that, that amendment was-
In every measure possible to allow, make the public know that it is, frankly, it's illegal.
Right.
You can't have an open container.
So that amendment was made and seconded.
Right. So we vote on each amendment?
Yeah.
Individually?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, I don't remember calling that second. There's a lot going on. Oh.
Don't you have to vote on Phil's first and then?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, can someone remind me?
I made an original motion to approve the licenses as requested.
The easiest thing for you to do is rescind your motion and entertain a new motion.
Yes, let's do that.
So would you be willing to rescind your motion?
Okay, I will rescind my motion for the original request, which was all the dates.
Great.
So I'm rescinding that to entertain the amendment.
Which would be, so Phil has a whole new motion, Phil's doing a new motion, the new motion is to approve the event for Saturday nights only.
I, I motioned to approve the events for Saturday nights only.
And require-
On the dates that provided, as well as ensure that the appropriate enforcement and data collection as explained by Selectmen's nearly.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. It would be good if they could give us numbers, how I came and how many.
And provide that feedback to the licensing officials within 30 days.
At the end of the event?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, then where's my amendment on the posting?
It was in that.
It was in that.
Yes, yes.
He included it.
He included. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. All right, can we just take the booze and brews next, since we've already been discussing at this location? So we have, this is a request of Jacob Crandall for two wine and malt licenses for the booze and brews at the Stevens Coolidge Place Thursday and Friday of this week. 6:30 to 9:00, thank you. I don't know how it opens.
We're on a different, if it was the last thing.
You guys want to comment on this?
Oh, okay, I-
Sorry. So Kelly Reed, or, sorry, Kelly Cormier now, 169 Anniver Street. So just, so with the liquor license that just approved, I think that takes them to 28 for the property. So would again ask that you deny the next two days. Thank you.
So, thank you. So this, according to the legal interpretation of the bylaw, this doesn't count towards the fairs because it's a different entity requesting it because it is the beer truck. Personally, I get the interpretation. I struggle with that because to me, if, if it, I mean, the notch brewing, it's advertised as notch beer garden. It's notch beer garden event. This is not Jacob Crandall's event. This is, sorry if I just killed your name, Jacob. This is the Stevens Coolidge event. I mean, that's how it's put on web, on Facebook and so on. So even though it's a different name, I, I struggle with that being in. I still think it should count, even though I think legally it doesn't count towards the 30, but-
Well, we have to go by legally.
But anyway, we have to, I mean, but we still get the ability to decide regardless.
I think that the principle of it, whether, right or wrong, the principle of it certainly, again, if you're the neighbor, it doesn't really matter who's pulling the license if the event's happening in the same space right next door to you. And it's happening during the week. Now, this event, though, ends at 9:00 PM, correct? If I'm misreading?
Yes, 6:00 to 9:00, Thursday and Friday.
What's the anticipated turnout for this event?
Uh, sorry, do we know anticipated turnout for this event?
Says it sold out last year.
So it's, there is a, there is a limit because that means if you're selling out, you can't, you can't have 1,000 people there. I mean, there's that finite number of tickets in that.
I'm sorry, have you sold tickets to the event? Do you have numbers of how many tickets you've sold?
No, not all. I can get that for you.
Can I ask a side question, Melissa?
Sure.
About, so noise ordens has always been something that I've, I've struggled with. But so that's a crux of most of their complaints. And I know Kelly specifically, the noise that goes through her particular home, given where she is. What are the tools at her disposal? And what are the tools overall at residents' disposal when it comes to that? Like, what is-
So I'm assuming we have a nuisance bylaw. I believe we do. I believe I've talked to Paul Hutchins about it in the past. And so the nuisance bylaw is probably our number one tool. There's typically two tools for noise disturbances. One is actually the Board of Health bylaws and state regulations, which are an excellent tool, but really require appropriate mechanical mechanisms for us to actually record the, the noise. Most communities use the nuisance bylaw in order to do noise enforcement. I haven't actually seen the bylaw, but typically, that's what our tool would be. I could pull it up.
I know I just threw that at you because where I'm approaching this, I hope I explain this better than my last dive.
I believe we do.
They have a finite number of tickets anyways, so we'll be able to figure out how many people they expect. But at the end of the day, even if it's just 10 people, that doesn't give them the right to be able to all go and go home, which I'm sure you don't in this for the neighbors. And so that's why I wanted to understand that, that particular, what, what tools are at their disposal as residents when a big, at least for Woodland, a big source of their concern is the noise that happens regardless.
So nuisance bylaw and your zoning? That's interesting.
We dealt with some of this with the airport years ago on the decibels. It's pretty high, actually.
We just dealt with it recently with small ones.
And small ones.
And it was, yeah, yeah. We went through that quite a bit, you know, where they had mechanical devices before they-
And the light, the tents.
The sound, to make sure that it was below the loud decibels.
What is, like, okay, so our, my neighbor, our residential neighbor has a party and it's really loud, it's not a fuck at night, and I call the police, and it's not uncommon that police-
Is this a true storm? Because you just made a neighbor really bad.
He was at that party.
He was there.
Um, no, but really, like, so, I mean, that happens all the time, that a neighbor will call the police because somebody else is being too loud or having an event that's too loud. And the police go and they just kind of say, like, quiet down. So what?
So that would be, that's public nuisance. That would fall under, so we do have, you do have public nuisance bylaw. You did. And it is enforced by the police department. And basically, it's anything that endangers your comfort, well-being in your home. And so the Board of-
By enjoyment.
Right. Board of Health, state law regulations typically are the ones that you see with the decibels. And usually, those decibels, if you really get down into it, it's just, it's really like the sound of a dishwasher. It's typically not as loud as you would expect. A lot of the time, those type of calls, we get about trucks that are idling and that kind of thing. And that's usually when we put up the Board of Health. For public enjoyment, that general nuisance, that is enforced by the police department.
And so hypothetically, if noise had taken to a point where it was truly impacting their lives, I don't, I believe that it does at times. These residents should be calling These residents should be calling the police department to go away and so.
And they would either quiet it down or issue a ticket, depending on what they observe as a nuisance.
So, I mean, let's just play this out. I mean, there's an event at the Stephen Coolidge place, and there's a police phone call about the noise. I mean, they're gonna go.
They use their reasonableness factor. They look at the time of day, they look at the event that it is, what it's licensed for. They have, it's really a subjective analysis that they have to do when they get there. So I, I would assume that if they go to an event, that's an event that's being run, that has a license from the board, that has sold tickets, they're gonna use their discretion, make a determination whether or not there is a nuisance.
I can tell you as someone who lives next to Mary Mac College, I've used this.
You know, it's all about nuisance. Yes.
And.
With success?
Um, yeah, reasonably enough, yeah, and, and I don't know that my calling actually made the difference, but it did seem to diminish within a very reasonable period of time. And I will say that my experience in calling our, you know, our, our, our police, they, they responded respectfully and quickly and it seemed to be settled, so in a, in a fair enough way. I mean, that's the challenge, when you live close to someplace like this, it's like, it comes with a neighborhood, and sometimes that's okay, sometimes it's not as okay. So I'm, I'm empathetic to where you've been. Literally, I've had the same, same issues. And the best thing I can tell you from my own experience is having that communication with, with that other facility. And the folks at Mary Mac College know who I am, and I know who they are, and they communicate with me, and that goes a long way to, I know when it hap, outside of being on this board, I know when an event's coming up. I know when fireworks are coming up. I know all those sort of things, so I'm prepared and I have an opportunity to weigh in. And that's, I guess, the type of relationship that I think, you know, all of a sudden we're at that place. I have the same problem too. You know, 15 years ago, there weren't lights on the stadium, there weren't football games at night, there were beer parties, but they weren't. So I get the, 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 how it's changed quickly, and I think we as a board have a real opportunity to figure out how to, how to integrate that here. And so I think we've set the path with a good, good suggestion tonight to make all parties aware that, you know, we just have to bring it to current day. Enough said.
So for this Halloween thing, you don't have any idea how many tickets maximum you're selling, how many you have sold? You don't know, what, do you know why we're just getting a request now for something on Thursday?
Twenty first, it's the date.
The application.
Um, date of event, date of application?
There's something on the 27th of August, August 27th, in the illustration where the food bar is gonna be.
So is that our bad that we're just getting this if it was August 27th? That's.
Well, that could have been the date that it was submitted, and then it has to go through the approval process, or the last of the.
Oh, right.
I was, excuse me, I was told it was submitted in August, so that's.
Yeah, so then it was submitted in the appropriate amount of time to get on the agenda.
That's plenty of time.
Maybe we can look at why there was such a delay in our own. Well, I mean, we don't need to get into that. They got it in on time, that's fine. I, that's what I wanted to know. We can look later as to why, maybe it took us so long to get it through our own internal process, but.
Give them half that shows us towards the rear, kind of way from the least of butters overall, it's back in the middle of the property, and I would like to know what the total number of people are that would be attending it. But I think it's just a good reminder that even though it's an event that's allowed to happen, it doesn't give them carte blanche to go and be as loud as they want. And I think that the neighbors, I don't know if they've ever exercised that, but that's a right that you have as a butters and as residents of our community, and I know that that sounds.
I mean. Yeah.
So the application doesn't start to get processed until you pay the fee, and the fee was submitted on October 2nd.
That's why.
That's why, okay. I don't know. I, I also really struggle with the fact that this was advertised before we provided a license. I, that's very frustrating. I'll just make a note that that should not happen in the future. What do we want to do? Do we have a motion? And then we can discuss it further?
So I would, I would motion approval. I would really, I'd like to motion approval, and then I'll go into discussion if it's seconded.
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
I would like perhaps, as the chairman of the full board or the chairman of our licensing commission, to either put on the agenda, or if we can work at Selectman with our town manager's office to really work with neighbors to determine what makes the most sense for right there. I mean, I don't, perhaps they're at an impasse where the communication isn't happening the way it should. I mean, I, I really want to find a way that, like, I, I hear loud and clear regarding the issues with the construction on that site.
But then what the planning processes right now going through?
So I was gonna say, regardless of what the planning process says, it's clear that they already have an issue, and so whether they were planning on doing all of that work or not, it's impacting neighbors' lives right now. And I don't know how, I don't know how, and I guess I would like to dive into that more. Maybe it's a subcommittee of two of us working with individuals from town hall, whether it's the health department, police department, to talk about noise, et cetera. But I know it, it preceded me by, I think, a couple weeks joining this board of Selectman that they addressed the decibel issue and noise issue over at Smallak Farms. And I don't, I think a big piece of this right now, parking traffic is obviously something that's impacting these people's lives, but, I mean, it's surely we can, we can work with the facility and develop a plan of action on their part that helps mitigate the noise so that it's not impacting especially the Woodland neighbors. And I know that they've made some event by event changes, where they've moved staging, et cetera, but they wouldn't still be here every night. I mean, we love having you, Kelly. And I would argue that it's probably, I mean, you don't need us to lobby to the planning board about these concerns, ha ha, um, but, uh, because you're on the planning board, um, but I do.
But I think that's exactly the privilege of the planning board, to do that, and hopefully they're doing exactly that. Why, I mean, I, I, I think that would be kind of like crossing, or kind of stepping on.
Let's.
I mean, the, the planning board's job is to look at this comprehensive, or look at this permit and this request comprehensively and address all of those items.
I'm not, I'm not thinking of, I think that, I'm not thinking of the request. I'm saying that starting right now, right, these, these, you're here because of right now. I heard that you're also concerned about what's happening down the road, but my guess is that if they weren't planning on expanding, you don't seem terribly happy with the status quo as is. And obviously, Kelly, you're not. I don't know if the other neighbors from Old Village feel the same way. If the, certainly the emails would say to me that regardless, that you are not happy with the status quo. And I don't know if this is gonna be an exercise we have to go through every time they request a license, and it just feels like we should probably be a little bit more pro, we should be proactive as a select board with working with the Stevens Coolidge house to make sure that the neighbors' concerns are taken into consideration and that we address specifically the noise issue that seems to be a reoccurring theme.
I, I, you know, I, I agree with that to be, you know, to be proactive, like you said, with Mary Mac College informing you what events are going on. But, you know, we also have to contend with, you know, the, the common now is more active than it's ever been, you know, and that's in the immediate area. Not to bring up something else, but to digress, but something else to take into consideration is the level of activity in the common now in conjunction with what's going on at the Stevens Estate.
I, I would say that I, I agree. I think that Chief Gray, in fact, today initiated a study, or is going to initiate a study of just the traffic over there overall because of neighbor complaints regarding on that section of Osgood Street, where your street is right off of, actually.
Sorry, can I?
So I, I know, I, yeah, so that's, my motion was made, but I think that we, because otherwise, we're gonna have the same conversation every single meeting if we don't begin to review this. But I also wanted to make sure that neighbors knew that this wasn't falling on deaf ears.
So, I'm sorry, where are we? We have a motion which is made and seconded for approving brews and booze.
Booze and brews.
Because it's, you're saying because it's far enough away from the.
I think we should approve it. We've given the tools now to neighbors in the event that there's a noise issue, and I think that until, if there is noise that goes, that is a prerogative as a butters. Call the police if noise goes above what they deem acceptable, and in the meantime, not in the meantime, I would just put it out there that we work with the property owner to address the long-term concerns regarding noise. Otherwise, we will go through this every single meeting.
Do we have any other discussion about? All right, then. Sorry, I'm weighing my own, my own feelings here. I'm sensing everyone wants to approve this, so I guess I'm, I probably would have been willing to not approve it because of the short timeframe and.
But the only thing is, did the applicant know that they don't start to process it until the money is paid? They all knew that.
Yeah, I'm also cognizant. People have bought tickets and made plans and I don't want to, I don't want to create a big issue for all those people. I really don't want things to be advertised and tickets sold again before we approve things in the future, but, so, okay.
There would be long-term repercussions for that facility if one event, so that's, I hope that that's, I would, our goal is not to sabotage.
I mean, we deal with, we deal with weddings that are planned and they come for the liquor license afterwards, not there, but at other, other event venues.
Right, exactly. I agree.
So we need to.
I agree, that's why, that, my point is, I don't want to.
So, I mean, I just would implore you again, as the chair said, don't do this again. I mean, don't, we go on note and advertising for things that you don't have a right to advertise for yet, and that's, that's very important. I mean, we, you can't, we shouldn't be doing that. You know, that takes the teeth out of this board, or it makes, again, you know, it makes this board seem punitive if we, if we say no, but you've already advertised it and you've already sold tickets. That's, puts us in a very bad position, a very awkward position.
That's the point, so, I agree.
We get put in awkward positions enough, we don't like to do it.
Yeah. All right, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Madam Chair, regarding, was that, is that a reasonable request, or is there more information that, that you feel you would need from us, or how, how would you recommend we approach this?
So typically, just because, I'm, I'm not sure I heard 100% consensus on doing it, maybe I'm wrong. Typically, I would suggest that you put this on as a next agenda item, and that we have a subsequent conversation outside of licensing about how we want to set that up and what, who we would want involved.
I would encourage that because otherwise, you will.
Yeah, okay, let's put that as a.
Every meeting.
Let that go in the licensing area. Well, we'll discuss it, okay. All right, and then, sorry, we have another request also for a one-day wine and malt license from Deborah Ingles on behalf of Smallak Farms for a baby shower on October 27th. The reason this one is late is because it's a surprise situation. I don't want to read too much. I assume you guys read it, but it says it's a surprise, and I don't want to like, just on the event, someone's watching or listening. I don't want to ruin it. So information was in the packet. I would be supportive of this. I don't think I have anyone from Smallak Farms here, so unless, if you guys want to remind yourselves what's in the application. Everything was in order.
I've given these away before. Yeah, I remember I gave one away one time. Surprise, man. So we're just looking for a motion then?
Yeah, I'm just looking for a motion.
A move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commission approved the request of Deborah Ingles of Smallak Farms for a, I guess we have to mention the event, right? Baby shower in the barn on October 27th, 2019, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM, in ways of police detail.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to move out of licensing?
A motion for out of licensing, please.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, so we're back to our regular agenda. Let's move forward. Old business. We have nothing listed under old business, new business, we have nothing listed under new business. Town managers report, the job vacancy log.
Yeah, so we, we are currently interviewing for town clerk. We started that yesterday, although resumes are still coming in. And additionally, we will be bringing someone forward for the treasurer collector position, and we have filled the project manager position as well, which is great news because we've got a lot of projects going on. I also want to thank everyone who participated in the lake cleanup this weekend. A lot of people were there. It was a great event for the community. And I also just want to thank Jean Enright, who's really been kind of a beacon the last year. I mean, she's been acting for, I think, longer than anyone else has been acting, and really did an amazing job keeping things moving. So I was hoping we could just recognize her for all of her service. It's really been a lot.
Absolutely.
Right?
Thank you, Jean.
Amazing. So, she's, she, first thing I told her, when I told her Andrew got high, she said, when does he start?
I would have guessed it would have been putting in a vacation.
I'm sure that's next. So she's done a great job. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Selectmen's updates and comments.
Um, I would say that if you are interested in the Stevens Estate boards, please apply and submit your papers. I mean, we, we have interviewed two individuals for the trustees positions. We have four open seats, and well, I guess, yes, we could just give them away, and they were two phenomenal people. I do think that in theory, we would like to be interviewing several people and picking a combination of the best. And so please, if you have an interest in the Stevens Estate, send your resume in.
Okay, for, for me, just a reminder that the North Andover Women's Club is having a fashion show with a lot of local familiar faces between our own new town manager, the chiefs, Kelly from Rose and Dove, and we have Jackie from the knitting store, whose name I keep forgetting.
A garden for knitters.
Thank you, thank you. And we have the Crane Brothers, and we also have the Davis Brothers, one police, one fireman, both, in both families. Timmy Campbell from Eagle East, and I'm, and we also have Superintendent Gilligan, and we have Jim Mealy, and we also have Mr. Nugent from the guidance department, and a whole host of other people. We have that terrific DJ, and now I can't think of, Russ, I can't think of his last name, he's, he's great, and we, thank you. And then we also have, believe it or not, this is a little bit different and a little special, we have a couple of very small guests. They are, that will be making an appearance, and they are rescue ponies who serve as guidance and help for people who need that. So it's a full jam-packed night. We have food from Good Day Cafe, and we do have a couple of signature beverages. And all the money we raise goes towards different causes around the town of North Andover, and it's really a fun night. It's a lot of fun. Tickets are still available. And if there are still any left over, they will also be sold at the door if there are any left over, so please keep that in mind. It really is a fun night. On the wreaths, we do still have a few more slots for the town wreaths. They are $70. If you are interested, please send a check for $70 made out to the Holiday Decorating Committee to 65 Green Street in North Andover, along with your name, address. Please put your phone and email address in case we cannot read what you wrote for the dedication and your location. We really need all that information. And we, the historical society is going to help us by letting us use their building to assemble the wreaths, and we are always looking for volunteers for that as well. So we will keep you informed as to time of that. We really do need the help. We've got a lot of wreaths in this town, so that's that. So all, again, good stuff.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
All good.
Nothing from here. All right, well, thank you all. Our next meeting will be Monday, November 2nd, 2019. I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
Monday is November 4th.
Okay, well, we have something mistaken here on the thing. Okay, so, it says November 2nd on the, on the, on the agenda, so November 4th.
Me and Laurie are coming on Saturday.
You guys are coming on Saturdays.
We'll be here on Saturday.
Okay, so Monday, November 4th, 2019, no harm done. So I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, we have an out of town number.
Sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm out of town on November 4th. I totally forgot that, I'm sorry. I don't usually travel.
I rescind the motion then, right to adjourn.
Yeah, hold on, so the next Monday is the 11th, that's.
Veterans Day.
I'm back, I'm coming back Wednesday.
I was gonna say, we often switch to Tuesday if there's an issue. Please don't bring it earlier. Like next.
I'm really sorry.
Like next week. I cannot do it next week.
No, next week would be too short.
Tuesday, the twelfth?
We often, that's what we often do, we'll switch it to Tuesday, especially on a holiday Monday.
Or Wednesday, the. Or, I mean, I could do Wednesday, the sixth.
Is there an option to do remote?
No, I can't, sorry.
Okay, so then. All right, well, let's, we got time, right? We have, we don't have to post a meeting until another week or so. So why don't we all take a chance to look at our calendars? We'll pull up some dates. Unless everyone's ready to say tonight, if we want to do it on the twelfth, did you, so we would have it on the twelfth, and then our next meeting would be on the eighteenth to get us back on schedule.
Is that enough time?
Because we don't like to have one on the week of Thanksgiving, which is the twenty-fifth. So.
How's that with you, Madam Town Manager?
Yeah, the twelfth's fine.
I don't know what.
So we can change it to the twelfth.
I mean, unless you want to do it on the Thursday.
Thursday, the seventh, that would work for me, too. Anything's fine.
What about the sixth?
Do you want to get back to us, and then we'll do this date, and if we have licensing, we.
Wednesday, the sixth, that's impossible for me.
Okay, so then, so use the seventh or the twelfth?
So do I, Laurie and I go back and see if there is any licensing that needs to go on, and then we can circulate with you tomorrow for scheduling. Does that work?
So we'll look, we'll look to the seventh or the twelfth.
Okay, we're on it.
That sounds good.
I'm good with the seventh, Thursday night's good. Yeah, to space it out, to give us.
I agree, yeah. Thanks, guys, sorry.
No, the policy is, we always try to accommodate, if we can. We've done that for years, and it's a good policy.
Maybe if you didn't say the second on the agenda, she.
Set her off.
Yep.
No, she's doing her job.
Oh, I was blaming the chairman, I was blaming the.
A adjournment, so do we have a motion on adjournment?
Yeah.
Motion would.
Do we have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we got, we got surgery.
Yeah, I just started trying.